Why is Miss Tamber lives in Fort Smith?
Dear Father, we just come to you to tell you how we love you and how we thank you for the blessings and the things that you've provided for us, Lord. We just want to be good stewards, God, of the money that we have in our county, the responsibility that we have as leaders here, God. I just pray that you give us the knowledge, give us the wisdom that requires us to make decisions that are best not only for ourselves, but things that are pleasing to you and things that better our county. Dear Lord, I just pray for those that are not here today, those that have lost loved ones, God. I just pray that you comfort them, that you help them in the days to come, Lord. We know that grief is hard, God, and you're the only one that can provide what we need to fill that void. Dear Lord, I just pray for those that are sick, God, that you'll just be with the caregivers, you'll be with the doctors and nurses as they care for those and help heal them if it be your will. Dear Lord, I also lift up first responders, God. So many things are going on in our world today, and I just pray that you'll put a head to protection around them and keep them safe, keep them well. Dear Lord, again, I ask for your wisdom as we conduct our business here, be with each person here. Dear Lord, thank you for your love, thank you for your Son Jesus, and God, for each one of us. It's in his name I pray, amen.
Approval renewal of lease agreement with J and S Family Cones.
So this is John Walker's lease, and we've had it with Union Cattle Company, which was a family company, but now it's a different entity that he owns. And it also includes the new acreage that we recently bought. So basically, all the terms remain the same regardless of rent and all that. I did add in there after speaking with Gary that I think the former lease provided for it, but John Walker had mentioned maybe draw a milo, and that should, according to Gary and I talking about, it's not an issue as long as it's not over, you know, the place time, the chest time, whatever the provision is in there. So that's really it, not a problem.
I'm making a motion.
And you signed the lease too.
To your backboard.
Yeah. Two big lines, right?
Yeah.
No, that's it, that's why I added that.
All right.
He's gonna say it later.
Yeah.
All right, we're gonna get leave and a little later.
He's there.
He just walked in.
I'm ready to go.
Oh, you ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I'm late too.
No, who more? Do it. All right.
All right.
Review and discuss bids from Montan Industrial Repainting that are received on Thursday, February 15.
Yes, sir. Good morning. We received, we got five bids, one of them we were unable to open because his certificate's final has retired, expired, so we couldn't open it. I called him, he was under the impression that he had 180 days of grace, but that's not the rule. The rule is 180 days is for him to get it renewed, not to keep bidding. So anyway, we can't, his company was a southern landscape, so it, in way to register, I just want to get permission to return it unopened. We'll get some motions in a minute, buddy. Thank you.
Hey.
We received, in that case, we received four bids. I'm gonna read those out, I'll give them to bid that, but I'll read them into the record. We received a bid from Smith, Lomond Management Auction, Mississippi Certificate 22, my glass has been working today, I think it's 585. The bid was, he originally bid 359,000, but he made a bunch of errors in his math, so his official bid is 323,014.40. Phillips Contracting Company out of Columbus, Mississippi Certificate 00229, bid 372,875, 372875. Patent Construction out of Pontotop, Mississippi Certificate 15777, bid 410,650, 410,650. J M Duncan out of Ripley, Mississippi Certificate number 16029, bid 443,030, 443,030. Our estimate on this job that was in the grant amount was for 340,000. Smith Long, who was the apparent low bidder when we started, and his bid was around 359, made about 30,000 errors, and he has requested within the 24 hours to withdraw his bid. He said he can't do it for that, he can't take, start off the job knowing he's 30,000 in the hope. So he's requested to be, to withdraw. Phillips Contracting, and Chandler and I talked a couple of times about this. I know Gary and Bonnie have been dealing with, what if we go to that bid at the 372,875? It just about eats up all of our contingency. We had about 34,000 contingencies. So I talked to Chandler, and since he is now officially the low bid, I think the law allows us to negotiate some with him. So unofficially, I called him and said, if we told you that we wanted to negotiate, would you negotiate? And he said, yes, I would. So as of the last time I talked to him, I think he thinks he can get about 15,000 out of it. So that would put it down, I even done the math in my head, 157, maybe, 357. Gary and Bonnie and I had talked.
364. I think it was 379.
He was 372. So they beat back by 7, which is back, obviously, real close to what Smith thought he'd bid. But we also got an area up there on the north side where we met, and that area where we're gonna change 354, I think we can cut a few trees out of there, and if his bid of 3, I'm sorry, 375 a tree, I think, you know, we could, you know, just a few trees and we make up some money. So I think what he's proposing, and I don't have all the details, but the trees that we spec, we gave him two choices on some evergreen trees. They all still start out at six feet, but you could get those trees in a burlap bag wrapped, or you could get them in a pot, a bucket. And our spec said that they had to come in the bucket. Our landscape architect said they just seemed to grow a little better, just, you know, overall. But I think what he's gonna probably propose for his negotiation is to use them in the burlap bag. And I talked to the landscaper, and he said, look, he's gotta guarantee them, it don't matter whether he comes in a bag or really a bucket. So I think if that's what he's proposing to drop his bid by about 15,000, and we can negotiate down, we just can't negotiate up. So I think we can get this thing back within our money and our contingency. I also talked to Chandler and Gary about, if we rebid, here's the problem. It takes 30 days to rebid, and all of a sudden, we're now in the middle of March. We need to be planting trees really today. You start planting trees in April, and even in the May, they're probably not gonna fail. And you putting him in a position where he's having to guarantee that they're gonna live a certain.
And you put them down, do like.
Put them down.
How quick can they get started, you said, somebody up there?
He told me this morning, they're ready to go. He said, if y'all award it to us, we'll negotiate, and we're ready to go. If you're gonna award it, I would propose this. What I usually do is award the contract for the amount bid, the 372875, and do a supplemental change order that agrees to whatever price he's reducing it to. And then that's part of the contract. The other part, reducing some trees, we might wait on that and then do a change order later. I don't think we have to do that change order right off the bat and kind of get into the product. Because one suggestion that Gary made was on that east side where we really just kind of looking at raw land, you know, it's farmland, that we could space those trees out a little further, and that does cut a few out right there just to start with. So I know Phillips, I've done work with them before in the eye of Columbus, but they're good contractors. And I think, I think we can make it work.
I'm making a motion, we accept the bid, changing all the negotiations and changing the spec a little bit.
I'm gonna second with Chandler.
Motion by CJ. Return it to.
Um, yeah.
All in favor?
Mr. Larry.
Motion case.
Get Bo to send us a letter, just something writing confirming his withdrawal, which he told Bo on the same day after we talked to him.
Right. Yes, and if y'all would, then another motion to return Southern Landscapes unopened bid.
I'm making a motion on that too.
I'm gonna give for your benefit, here's, here's what Bo Smith did wrong, but there's the corrections. Yeah, and then here's the bid tab so he can record the other bids.
He's mocked it to me.
Yeah. Place it kind of halfway between Pontotop.
He's right there on the.
I'm gonna want that dude to start.
Um, all right. Then I'll call Bo and tell him we gotta have that so he can withdraw. And then Gary, you good with that and think that works for y'all?
Yeah, just to be clear, so the reduction conversation y'all had after we talked on the reduction was predicated on him delivering these trees or getting them in these burlap sacks versus the buckets? That's his, in his mind, the reduction?
He didn't say that, but I know that's where he's headed because he asked me about it.
Okay, and we're not looking at reducing the trees on the east side right now?
Right now. I think we just hold off. If I did the math in my head right, that uses about 17,000 of our 34 contingency. We come back later, reduce some trees, it's just gonna drop it down even more.
Right, okay.
I think this is us talking, I know we've had this conversation. What I'm kind of hoping to do maybe is reduce some trees and then go back around the sign and put some shrubs maybe instead of trees, and there are landscapers, so they would be able to do that, and we can negotiate a price for that, and reduce some trees and negotiate a price. Just make it look a little better around the sign.
Right, yes, sir.
There was some concern about the trees might block the sign, we'll all do that.
And the road front of John 32, there, probably in Walmart DC on the other side of the road from the sign.
We've got some, we've got some trees set up there, we can probably look at that, and need to space them out a little more or whatever, but they'll be back off the rideaway. They won't be out on the rideaway, so they'll be set back away from that ditch previous bid.
Perfect, okay. Yes, sir, thank you.
That's all I had, unless y'all had something for me. I talked to Chad this morning, I'm gonna have that rideaway he needs on 47th probably later this week, and I'll send it to you.
Is that one since she's already sent me? I've got some.
No, she should. That's on, that's on his bridge on Fifth, it's on Fifth.
Well, it's just sitting there, and I basically was telling him, don't do anything until he promises.
The problem is, well, you can go ahead and prepare the deeds, I just can't get them signed until the environmental approval. So you can go ahead and do the deeds. Here's, as soon as I get you the stuff, he's gonna get those signed. That's all I had.
Thank you.
Thank y'all, that's good, that's.
All right, you in team?
Yeah.
Chantry Clerk. Approval of January budget comparison report.
Budget.
Motion by Randy. All in favor? Motion case. Approval of payment to the Chantry Clerk for Chantry term of four.
Motion.
Motion by CJ.
Second.
Second for Randy. All in favor? Your bid. Circuit Clerk. Approval of Circuit Clerk order allowing payments to Circuit Clerk for cases where state fails in prosecution pursuant to Mississippi Code 625-7-13-K4.
I don't know anything about it.
I don't either.
That's where she gets, I guess she gets paid for, for programming the.
That's where, this is where state fails, they pay.
This is where they.
Man, I'm sure she get paid for their fault, isn't it? Yeah. Well, you say their fault, I mean, basically, it's in cases where the defendant is now not getting, she getting paid. I didn't even know there was a distinction between that. Why wouldn't you get paid? She's still doing her services.
Their song, she's just paid $4 a year, retirement. State failed case.
I don't know, we've never had that come up before.
There's just a handle.
Let's pass it, let me look at the context. I'm sure it's fine, I just like to read it real quick. Y'all move on to the next, and we'll come back to it.
Approval of payment to Circuit Clerk for 1% of all monies paid through the Circuit Clerk's office pursuant to Mississippi Code 625-7-13.
Five.
Y'all have anything about that one?
That's just some of her fees that she can get.
Oh, she didn't.
I'm gonna read that one too.
I will. You don't remember these coming up.
Well, she's just writing different than it's been presented.
I'm sure that's what it is. That's all it is.
But it don't work to check.
All right. Y'all gonna go and see, and then come back then?
Yeah, that's good. I got Chandler up there, we're all much more direct.
All right. Approval of contract for services with Circuit Clerk for setting up testing and programming voting machines.
That says contract, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm making a motion.
Say it.
Motion by Chad, second for Randy. All in favor? Motion case.
She crossed the same line, we just take.
No. Improvement. Approval of agreement with election systems and software for 2024 primary election support.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Randy, second for Chad, all in favor? Motion case. Approval of five election commissioners claim forms.
I'm making a motion.
Motion by CJ.
Second.
Second for Steve. All in favor? Motion case.
I'll have to speak to him.
I was waiting on you.
Who was that one by? CJ, CJ.
Approval of payment to Circuit Clerk for services to register.
Second motion.
Motion by Chad.
Second.
Second for Randy, all in favor? Motion case. Corner. Approval of payment to the corner for eight medicals on the.
How long? Yeah, Walker. I don't know, man.
Just watching. No, we're waiting on them.
I was just giving finger, why you reading?
We're watching the study.
Well, it looks like Ian just talked about B, was it A, B? That in cases where either the state fails in prosecution or where the defendant cannot pay, like if they're convicted, that the Circuit Clerk can be paid $400 out of the county treasury on approval of the Circuit Court and the allowance there above the court's supervisor. So we can approve it.
Sir Duncan, that was just an angle of the line.
That's right, then.
I think we're done before we go yet.
Yeah, then number five. Number five says the clerk of the Circuit Court may retain a commission on all money coming into his hands by law or order of the court, but someone to be fixed by the court not exceeding one half of 1%. So it's written on here as 1% of all monies paid, I think it's a half.
Very old, isn't it?
One half, but I think she's going to have to put an order too, which is fine. She can just go to one circuit judge, and I guess we can approve it, and she needs an order from the judge, she can get.
I'm saying.
All right, so you say that on that.
I'll make a motion on both of them.
Motion by CJ, second for Randy. All in favor? Motion case.
My suggestion, all right, so you're gonna make a motion on 3A. All right, Ian, but if you, well, let's start 3A first.
All right.
I'll second A.
Okay.
Motion by Chad, second for Randy on A. All in favor? Motion case.
All right, I'll wait.
On B, I would propose, I would propose that the motion be that she be approved payment in an amount determined by Mississippi Code 75, I mean 25-7-13-5. Because I think that's the most recent version, says a half. See what I'm saying? I wouldn't, I wouldn't say a half or a.
Don't put a percentage.
That's right, that's right, because whatever the motion, a motion to permit payment pursuant to that code section.
I'm making a motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Steve. Second by CJ.
And so Terry, make sure you say that.
Motion case.
It's a motion to approve payment pursuant to that code section.
You hear that tammy shoot right in minutes up there?
Don't put a percentage in there. If it's 1%, great for ours, you know, we don't care, we just whatever.
Whatever's ahead, it's just whatever.
That's right.
That's the bad old examiner.
B 911. Approval to amend budget for service and maintenance agreement by amending the 911 fund contractual services in the amount of 21,600.
We approved it, well, we approved the contract, but that wasn't put in the original budget, so we're not over this fault, but we pulled the year in, we might.
I'm making a motion before they drop me out there.
Second.
Motion by Chad, second for Steve. All in favor? Motion case.
Does someone second the corners?
Yes, Randy.
Randy, Randy.
Justice Court. Approval of payment of $500 to Monroe County for constable fees. Motion to approve. Motion by Randy. Second by Steve. All in favor?
We must.
Monroe, I have a bit.
Yeah. Probably.
He's heard it before.
Yeah. Fourth Commission. We gotta do them individually, y'all know.
Yeah, and you want real Paul and Cole of them, and all that, and you, they'll be, you're a reporter.
We can do that all at once.
We can do that at one time, we can.
I make a motion to approve loans, appointments, and re-up appointments on this list. Y'all were the population.
I'm second. Second for Randy.
Tyler Cooksey's a good guy, right?
The appointments are Candace Riles, First District, Lisa Bowe, Second District, Tyler Cooksey, Third District.
He's a new one.
Yeah. Terry Easterling, Fourth District, and Ronnie Blythe, Fifth District.
There's a motion there, sir.
Yeah, there's a motion. Motion CJ, second, Randy, all in favor? Motion case. Approval of $25,000 security bond for the treasurer select by the Park Commission.
Motion.
So they gotta select a.
They all select some chairman.
Motion by Randy.
Second.
Second for Steve. All in favor? Motion case. Road Department. Approval of full-time employment for Ricky Kitty as a mechanic.
I'm making a motion.
Second by CJ.
She said that right there, I was about to copy.
Y'all make a, one motion on all of them? Or we need to do them individually?
I'm sure if we can, all of these, tires.
Can we do that too?
I guess so, Josh, your Basil's, I would say, I don't want to do that.
I would reword my motion, I include all of these part-time, full-time, employee for road.
You got five dollars.
All right, let me just read them all off.
I'll take them, three more, yeah.
Approval of part-time employment for Flav Gillett. Approval of part-time employment for Josh Basil. Approval of part-time employment for Hugh Mormon. Approval of one school bus turnaround. Oh, we'll do that. Yeah.
I'll let you sign that one right there. All right, I signed that, I don't know, Hugh Mormon. Got more of them to do for. Crazy. Terry, I'll let you stop.
All in favor on that? Motion case, all right. Approval of one school bus turnaround for Union County School District, County Road 359.
I'm making a motion.
I'll say it.
Chad with the motion. CJ with the second. All in favor? Motion case. It's good two pools for colors.
Yeah, man, just got to cut off the trailer. Just trying to get you together with these, bro.
So 30 each, art pipe.
Yeah, that's what makes it tough.
30 foot art pipe, yeah. G and O, 5,000. G and O, five thousand five hundred sixty-three dollars and eighty cents. Golden is five thousand four hundred and fifty-nine dollars and two cents.
G and O's.
G and O's.
You make a motion to take G and O, there's a low B.
Mm-hmm. Chad with a motion.
Second.
Steve with second. All in favor? Motion case. Discuss three quarters for Bush Hollis, for Bush Hollis, forty-one fifteen flex wing mowers. You get the two?
Uh, I think it's a tank, it's got a right there, alright. Yeah. And if you have three, then you're taking three. Three. Three.
And did Scotty ask you guys about bond, two, or just one?
Yeah, no.
Are you gonna prove two, or?
Did that say like you're gonna prove two?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, really? Eight, seven, two, that option.
Loving equipment sales, is that it?
There's some neck and my lungs.
Is twenty-three thousand one hundred and thirty-four dollars.
That should be a little, it'd actually be six hundred dollars or less, if you buy two.
And. Greg Davis, Peach Outdoors, twenty-five thousand five hundred and twenty dollars and fifty cents. And Johnny Garrison was twenty-eight thousand one hundred dollars.
I make a motion to refer to the low quote, up to two, for show.
Alright, David with a motion for two. And Andy with a second. All in favor? Motion case. Discuss two quotes for goose neck trailers. What's the name of that?
What's the name of that quote, Tammy? Can't find it out. Cleveland, Cleveland is that one, and Better, Butterbilt, that one, Bill, another.
Cleveland's fourteen thousand three hundred dollars. And Butterbilt's fourteen thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Make a motion to shift a little bit for two fighter.
Alright, Andy made a motion, second, second, Steve. All in favor? Motion case, just the Cleveland. Security department. Discuss folks on purchasing new firearm system at jail.
Damn, you don't explain that.
That, that, oh, that's, y'all have the phone?
You got one right here.
You got a fire, and one fire.
Here you go.
Yeah.
This is basically, we've been having a lot of issues with the firearm at the jail, a lot here recently, there's continuous problems, faults, alarms. Last couple times, fire department come, they couldn't even silence the alarm, we'd have to get them to come up here to manually do it. There's been a lot of issues, I, I don't think it's ever had any other than just regular maintenance work done, sense of putting in. This is to replace the whole system basically, everything except for the wiring, and they, if the wire, they will check the wiring, but if the wire's bad, they'll replace it, it'll be extra. Just if only the wiring is good, but.
What is the V fire?
Yeah, I got a quote. A fire. Uh, two four, four four, twenty-five, six, nine, four, thirty-six. And one from security, along with the two below. Twenty-nine, eight, sixty-two, seventy-eight.
And they got money in their budget, don't you think?
Yeah, they were.
Turn your, what, they got a lot like.
Twenty-eight.
Which is in there. Twenty-nine, eight, sixty-two.
E.
Yeah, thirty-eight.
That's one.
Make a motion to shift a little bit.
You want to make a motion?
I'll say it.
Steve with a second, all in favor?
Okay.
Motion case. Approval of.
I don't know what these ain't, I'm really wrong, either, I do, I do, I do.
Y'all gonna do them all at one time?
Yeah.
One. Just changing the parts, it's, no, nothing. Going from jail dispatch, one to going for part-time, full-time dispatch. One, new hire, part-time jail, two, full-time, no, part-time, uh, full-time, no jail.
I make a motion to approve all of, one time.
I'll second.
Motion by CJ. Second for Randy. All in favor?
What's that, yeah?
Motion case. Tax office, approval of surrender tag list. Here Chad, you on that?
I make a motion.
Motion for Steve.
Second.
Second for Randy, all in favor? Motion case. Approval of payroll authorization for Jacob Alexander as deputy assessor.
This will be a new hire for the assessor side. Remember, right now we have a contract with tri-state mapping, and we need to transition Caleb into that role, hopefully, and so this would be the next assessor that would come up behind Caleb, that would be checking properties and out in the fiddle, just taking care of the assessor.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion for Chad, second for Randy, all in favor? Motion case. Approval of notice of petitions for reduction in assessment.
And it's just one.
Just one.
Mm-hmm.
Make a motion. Motion to CJ.
Second.
Second for Steve, all in favor? Motion case.
Gary, you made, you did.
So we don't need no executive session? Alright. Adjourned to Monday.
No, no, that was for litigation.
We gotta have one for.
Oh, oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'm making one for a little bit.
A motion based on.